Welcome to the new member orientation for for town meeting. If you're new to town meeting, welcome. And as you know, we're starting Monday night and we're going to be covering various topics related to town meeting tonight. So let me just give a brief overview. First of all, I'm my name is Greg Christiana and here's Pat. Greg Christiana and I'm the town moderator. And so I'll be presiding over town meeting unless like if I get sick or for whatever reason unable to attend. We'll have an assistant town moderator who will take my place. But I fully expect to be there the whole time. And let me just skip ahead to how a town meeting fits into our town government structure. This is from a document called ABCs of Arlington Government. I could share a link afterwards. Actually, if someone maybe Annie, if you're able to kind of put that in the chat for folks like that, the link here. That has like various documents that are relevant for town meetings, such as the town bylaws. I think the Town Manager Act and so on, which I'll get to some of those. And there's also a document that was produced by one of the envisioned Arlington task groups fiscal resources. I think I prepared a document called ABCs of Town Government, which is a really great overview of the town government structure, which I'm not going to cover in any detail here, but it's really worth your time to read that. And this is just one diagram from that document that I pulled out here where these are all like the town. Like at the bottom, we have all the town wide elected offices. And town meeting, obviously, the town meeting members, as you know, are elected within their precincts for a total roster of 252 town meeting members. And all these folks are, you know, elected by the voters of Arlington.
Quick update, Greg. I believe our town clerk is now appointed or will be.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, this document, I think it's from like 2022, I think. So yes, that's right. Town clerk is now appointed. That's right. And similarly, a few years back, the treasurer was also went through a similar transition from elected position to an appointed one. So town meeting acts as a town's legislature. We don't make laws like per se, but there's bylaws and bylaws are basically rules that that govern the town. And we have a document that's the the town bylaws, which is linked off of that link, which is hopefully in the chat now. The Arlington MA doc of slash town governance. And like these are large dot. It's like hundreds of pages, like the the town bylaws. So it's like lots of like regulations in it that apply specifically to Arlington. Like how committees are formed, things, things of that nature. And there is also appropriation appropriations that that make a town meeting that you all as town meeting members will be voting on. And you'll get into the details of kind of appropriations and the finance side of things. So I'll leave that to her. There's a distinction between annual versus special town meetings. And so the annual town meeting starts on the fourth Monday in April each year in Arlington. Every town has its own schedule for when they start their town, their annual town meetings. Ours is at the end of April. And instead, we're required to do that each year. And there's also special town meetings that can be called throughout the year. There's ways that like residents of the town can can trigger this if they get enough sync. I think it's like maybe, I think 200 signatures, maybe. More often it's the select board who will call for a special town meeting. If there's something, some matter that that needs to be voted on by town meeting. And for whatever reason, it's like, we're not able to wait until the next annual town meeting. Then these can be called kind of out of cycle at any time. Let's see constraints on what we can't and don't do. So I forget what the intention of this bullet point was so that anyone could feel like any of the presenters can feel free to jump in. But like, like, turns like the town doesn't make laws. And I think this will be covered later on, like laws are made by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, like by the state and also by the federal government, but but not specifically by municipalities like like our town.
So I'm I'm happy to add a couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead.
My bullet point. So town meeting doesn't set policies. That's the select board's responsibility. Town meeting cannot set the details of the school budget. Because there's a state law that says that the only thing town meeting gets to vote on is the general fund appropriation to the school committee, who sets their own budget. And town meeting can't like do things like levy taxes and so on and so forth that towns are not allowed to do. So we're really all about town bylaws and appropriations. And the occasional resolution, which I won't complain about until later.
Great. Thanks, Annie. And Pat is going to cover this a little bit later on at a high level. But like, there's also like home rule petitions, which I'll let him go, which is it's kind of it's like an interaction between what we do at the town level and what happens at the state level. But yeah, again, Pat will cover that in a later slide. There's like, as far as resources and support system. Folks, like, like, say, like between meetings, you can email me during town meeting, like while it's going on. I'm not going to respond because I'm not checking my email while the meeting's going on. But in between meetings, I'm happy to answer questions if you have like concerns or questions about how things are running. But also you should leverage the the knowledge of other town meeting members, some of who would be presenting tonight. Town meeting members in your precinct, for instance, if you know any of them, it's helpful to get to know them. Or if you if you have any acquaintances or friends who are also town meeting members, just kind of like think in terms of like your network. There's also a there's a Slack channel that's it's not officially like supported or recognized by the town. I don't have anything to do with it. I'm not on that Slack channel. It's just kind of self organized by town meeting members. And the folks who run that hopefully are reaching out to new town meeting members to let them know that that exists. And that's totally optional. Again, it's not an official thing, but it's something that's kind of organically a resident from from town meeting members themselves. Covered that and now I'll pass it over to to Adam, who is also our current assistant town moderator and will be until we take a vote the first night of town meeting for another assistant town moderator, which may in fact be Adam again. But we won't know until the meeting votes, the meeting decides. Adam, why don't you take it away?
Great. Thank you, Greg. Hi, everybody. I'm Adam. I'm from precinct 16. Welcome and congratulations on your election. And the warrant, okay, so there are 79 articles on the warrant. I don't know if you can see me. I'm in a little teeny screen next to the big slide. But the articles are just the items on our agenda. The warrant is just our agenda. And these articles take the form of to see if the town will, followed by a description of possible actions that is often very broad and general. The agenda has been developed from different sources and in March was mailed to every household in Arlington. So the mark is also an obligation. Greg, can you pull up the next slide? It obligates and constrains us as public servants. It's developed from a number of sources, as I said, and it's the framework for considering specific proposals that before they reach us are reviewed by different town boards and committees. The warrant is our contract with the people of Arlington that imposes obligations and constraints on what town meeting does. First of all, town meeting isn't done and we don't go home until we have disposed of each of the 79 articles. We might break for the evening, but second, we can only do things that are consistent with the descriptions of the possible actions that are in the warrant. In some parts of New England, the warrant is actually known as the warning. The warrant warns residents of the scope of what town meeting could possibly do. And in this way, well, people can say what they want, but really no one could say, I didn't know they were going to do that. They've been warned. It's a pretty open process. The town actually holds workshops about drafting warrant articles, usually in the late fall. The 2025 warrant closed in, I think, February, and it's already been mailed out. It went out in March, I think. So as I said, the warrant's an agenda only. It's a framework. We don't vote on warrant articles, right? But on proposals brought up under them. The proposals are discussed by one or more of the select board, the finance committee or the redevelopment board. These are the referring bodies. And they hold public hearings on each article before making their recommendation to town meeting. These recommendations are included in their reports. Again, in the little screen, this blue fuzzy thing, this is the select board report. And typically they're either favorable reports on a specific action, whether that's an appropriation of money or a bylaw amendment or a recommendation perhaps of no action, which is exactly, exactly what it sounds like. These recommendations, as I said, always follow a public hearing. Now it's become our practice, and you'll see this in action, I think, this year to bring the recommendations of the referring bodies before town meeting automatically. So nobody needs to stand up and make a motion. And that's just to help things move along a little bit quicker. So for example, when we get on the agenda to Article eight, which is canine control, the specific proposal to amend Title eight of the town's bylaws that is recommended by the select board will be before us. And that's a detailed proposal that you'll find on pages three through seven of the select board report. At that point, it'll be possible to debate the proposal, to ask questions about it, to propose amendments to it and and take other actions. So the proposal is not the warrant and is not printed in the warrant. And can be found in the written report of the referring body. And we do this for every article on the warrant. The warrant article defines the scope of how far town meeting may change a recommendation. Proposals to amend that go beyond the scope are out of order. A request that town meeting change some of the words in the proposal before us is called an amendment. And that might involve changing a quantity, deleting a paragraph or adding a new section, just for example. An amendment that would completely replace one proposal with another is often called the substitute motion or an amendment to substitute. But the the same rules and considerations apply. As a town meeting members, you have the right to propose changes. You also have the right to have time to consider them. And to respect that right to consider. The moderator generally will not allow complex and lengthy amendments to just pop up from the floor at the last minute. He has enumerated three possible ways to propose amendments as follows. And Greg, can we get the next slide too? So short amendments, 30 words or less that are straightforward can be made from the floor. More complex amendments may be considered if provided in writing to town meeting members at the start of the meeting. But a better option is if you submit your amendment by 5:00 PM on the business day before the meeting, where you're going to make that motion to amend. It can be provided to members electronically in advance. And the town, not you, will provide the printed copies. This really is the preferred method if it's possible. Sometimes it isn't possible.
Yeah, if I could just jump in just for a second, Adam, like the just to clarify that that any amendment like so this, the second option. And there's a, there's a link in the town, in the official town meeting page, like on the town website for town meeting guidelines and and forms. And there's a document there that goes into like the detail behind this is a kind of lengthy detail to so what's allowed and what's not. And specifically, it's what happens at 5:00 PM, the business day before the meeting at which the article comes up. That's when we intend to send that like I work with the with the town clerk to send out announcements to the town meeting member email list, which you're hopefully subscribed to at this point. So that you get all those timely updates. And so if you, if someone emails me at 4:50 PM on Friday, ahead of that article coming up at the meeting on Monday, I'm not going to be able to review that in time to get it into the announcement, to get it out to town meeting members in time. And so everything, that whole timeline works kind of backwards from there. So that's when we kind of push the button and like, you know, the train leaves the station as far as the announcements to town meeting members. And so to increase your chances of that, that that mode, that amendment or whatever it is that you're submitting, getting reviewed by me in time. You want to get it in like a day or two even ahead of that. Go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, great. Yeah, the name of that document that has a more detailed description of these different processes is called Town Meeting Guidelines. And Greg is the author of that document and it's on the it's on the website.
Can folks see this other tab that I'm messing with right now? Or are you still seeing the slides?
We can see them.
Okay. So yeah, this is the, you know, the Arlington, you know, 2025 town meeting page. And you go down to town meeting guidelines, procedures and forms, and it's this first link here. And and so this has it's basically, this goes into like excruciating detail about the three different options that that Adam is talking about.
Okay, great. In addition to the printed warrant, the town clerk has developed several tools to help us track our work, including the so-called annotated warrant, which is an online tool. And this is actually all of the ongoing materials related to warrant articles organized by article. So for each article, you're likely to find the report of the referring body, the text of any proposed amendments and any other materials. And things get added to it as they, you know, get filed as they go through the process that Greg described. And this is, you know, tremendously useful. I can remember when we didn't have that. But I also, I find it to be a tool to use in conjunction with the printed materials. The zoning stuff in particular is complicated and involves cross references to tables and maps. You know, good luck understanding it on your phone is all I'd say. However, you use to you choose to use the tool and the printed versions of reports. I just have some advice, which is to do your homework. The proposals are lengthy, some of them, some of them are complicated. If you wait until the night of to familiarize yourself with them, you will not equip yourself with a clear understanding of what they say or would do. So you're going to be there and you're going to be asked to make a decision. And you'll have to be relying on what other people say about these proposals only. And that's not great. It's not optimal. So it's a lot, but it's it's worth doing the work. And that's all I was going to say, Greg, but would you like me to take a stab at the consent agenda or just skip over that?
Actually, I'm going to cover that later on, but
Okay, great.
And so can everyone see the the annotated warrant here that I'm scrolling through? Okay, good. And so there's one more thing to add.
Let me just say one thing, though, is is I don't know if if this format, if we're going to have a an opportunity to ask questions, I think any of us would be happy to to answer them. But I'm going to put my email in the chat just in case anybody, you know, wants to ask me anything.
Great. Yeah, feel free, anyone, any new members, if you have questions about, because I mean, some of this material is pretty dense and can get technical. So if you have any questions, feel free to raise your hand. Let's see. Also, I just wanted to point out, in addition to the annotated warrant, I have this town meeting progress tracker, which I'll share in the chat, I'll link to that and just show you briefly. It's just a an overview of kind of the status of where we're like the progress of town meeting. So right now, the only thing that's been accomplished is electing everyone by ballot, which happened earlier this month. And so as we get through dispose of, which just means complete more of these articles, then more of these rows will turn green and this little chart over here will show our progress steadily over time. And the meeting is dissolved, I mean, I mean that we're done with this annual time meeting, basically after all these rows turned green. So there's a lot of work ahead of us to get through all these. And so it's a nice summary of like, like some, some of these have specific dates that they're going to happen on, like the budgets, which Annie's going to cover, I think, maybe next. And so we have specific dates for those we have to schedule. Like usually we just go through these in sequential numerical order as determined by the select board who puts the warrant together in the first place. But there's some articles that we need to take out of order because there might be guests who need to be there. So we could have, you know, a a useful deliberation with their expertise, like all the department heads. It's best if we can get all the town department heads present for discussion of the town budgets for any questions that come up about those budgets. So we have to schedule some of those, but for the most part, we go through pretty much sequentially. And with that, I handed over to Annie to discuss budgets and the finance committee.
Okay. So if you have already looked at your reports, you will discover that articles essentially 45 through 75 on the warrant are essentially finance committee articles. That is, they are articles we reported on whether we proposed them or not, because they involve money. So what the finance committee does is that we review all of the proposed departmental budgets over the course of January, February and March. And we're actually the ones who vote on what is before you to put it before you to refer the budgets to you. So we think of the budget as our budget. But the budget starts with the town manager and his department heads doing two procedures. One is that in the early fall, they they gather up all of their capital requests to send to the capital planning committee, who produces a capital budget. And then they put together their budgets based on what we know the revenue projection is. And those budgets are then handed to the finance committee in January for review. And then we make appointments with the department heads to look at all of those budgets, make sure they all make sense to us, ask detailed questions about what's contained in particular budget line items. And we make the recommendation on whether or not to approve departmental budgets as proposed by the department or to ask for changes or make cuts. So we've already done those budget reviews. And so essentially the budget that will be before you is the finance committee's budget. The budgets are constrained by our override commitments. That is, the commitment that we make every time we pass an override to constrain the increases in budgets to a certain percentage and to meet certain obligations. So although our tax income can only go up, our property tax income can only go up two and a half percent. We actually allow the town budgets to rise three and a quarter percent and the school budget to rise three and a half percent with a few exceptions. Healthcare budgets go up considerably more than that. We are trying to save money to meet our pension obligations. And we generally are putting, increasing those contributions towards the pensions by five and a half to six percent a year. And I think those are the only exceptions. But all of that stays within the override commitments. And then you will find at the end of your finance committee report, a copy of what's known as the long range plan, which is a five year forward looking projection of the effects of all of those budget decisions and all of our income coming in over time. An important thing to note is that we have a category of reserves in the budget that we call free cash, which, as Altusdi always says, is neither free nor cash. Free cash is all of the excess income over our income projection that we took in in a year, plus any budgeted expenses that we didn't actually spend. And that dollar amount is certified by the state and then that money becomes usable again a year later. And so we budget some of our income out of that free cash reserve as well as out of the override stabilization fund every year to get to a balanced budget. Of the 30 or so articles that are finance committee articles and are in our finance committee reports, I would just like to point out that all but two of them are standard articles. You will see them every year that you're on town meeting for as long as you are on town meeting. Some of those we would not go without debating, like the budgets and the capital budget. But some of them are so common that they will appear on the consent agenda. And I would just request, request that you consider that something that involves an appropriation is not on the consent agenda if there's a whole lot to talk about. And we will be much more efficient and have much more time for the real meat of the matter, which is the operating budget and the capital budget. If we don't also have to take votes that are likely to be 100% positive on standard boilerplate articles. If you want to go to the next slide, Greg. So these are the budgets that have been reviewed by the 21 members of the finance committee. There's a finance committee appointee for every precinct in town. With the exception of two or three members can be at large if we are unable to find someone interested in being on the finance committee from those precincts. If you think budgets and spreadsheets are a lot of fun and you're interested in being on the finance committee, we are always looking to fill empty slots that are currently held by at large members. And I think that's everything.
Yeah. So so while we're on the slide, I'll just add that when we get to the town budgets, which I think I'm, if you noticed on here, I don't know if you could read this, it might be too small, but like the town budgets are scheduled for May 7. And so when when we bring up the budget, it's like, oh, it's just one article, right? So it's like, but not all articles are created equal in terms of the amount of complexity or issues to debate about them. And so the town budgets are kind of like, they have like a whole kind of like agenda really within them, which is all of this now. And so, and this will be very similar, this will sound very similar when I cover the consent agenda later. But what we'll do is instead of having, it would be really unwieldy if we just had a debate on all the budgets all at once, right? Because these budgets cover very different sorts of issues and topics. And so what I'll do at the meeting, when we, when we get to Article 49, is that I will run through this exact slide at the meeting and I'll call out budget number one, finance committee, number two, select board. And anyone who wants to discuss or debate any of these specific budgets can call a hold, which means that we'll hold it so that we can have a debate on that, on those specific budgets one at a time. And so if only five budgets get held, it'll probably be more than that. But if only five budgets get held, then we'll have five different debates, one at a time for each of those budgets. And so if we terminate debate on, and we'll get into the procedures a little later on. The when we, when we finish debate, I'll put it that way, finish debate on one of the budgets, then we'll move on to the next budget until we get through all the budgets. And and then we vote on the the budgets in their entirety. We don't vote on the individual budgets one by one. We debate them one by one and then we vote on all of them all at once at the end. And if you're familiar with consent agendas, which again, we'll cover later, it'll sound very familiar. Okay, so I guess back to me. So as moderator mentioned before, it's like the moderator is the presiding officer over the meeting. And according to Um, and according to Massachusetts general law, uh, moderator decides all questions of order at the meeting, not just some of them, not most of them, but all questions of order. Um, but we wouldn't want to be like in a situation where moderators are just kind of like making up the rules as they go. Um, cause that would be really unwieldy and unpredictable and very frustrating, uh, uh, for everybody. And so, uh, there's certain customs and traditions, uh, and even, uh, uh, specified in our town bylaws, certain things that the moderator should be doing or not doing generally. Uh, so for instance, um, what I do is subject to like Massachusetts law, uh, the, uh, uh, the town manager act for, which is specific legislation, uh, uh, for Arlington. Each town has its own, whether it's a town manager act or a charter, they're, 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 they're similar and, and they, they establish how the town government works. And so we have a town manager act specifically for Arlington that specifies how our government works. Uh, it's kind of like a constitution sense for the town, uh, more or less. And, uh, and also our town bylaws specify, and I was just chatting with both Adam and, uh, and Pat earlier uh, today or this week about, uh, how our town bylaws specify kind of the rulebook that we follow, which is called Town Meeting Time. It's a physical book, um, looks like this. And this is the third edition, which has been in use for, I think, twenty-five years now, twenty-four, twenty-five years. Um, and just this year, the fourth edition just came out hot off the presses. Um, and you could actually buy this, I'll, I'll put a link in the chat, uh, unless someone else speaks to me to it, uh, where you can, you can, you can purchase a copy of this book. Um, so we, we're actually still going to be using this, the, the third edition, the older edition, uh, as our rulebook for this town meeting. Because that's what our town bylaws say that we're supposed to do. We're supposed to use the edition that was published in two thousand and one, which is the third edition. Uh, we'll probably change that next year, but, uh, um, uh, and, and so this is basically, if you're familiar with like Robert's Rules of Order, uh, it's very similar to that and what, and Pat will cover the procedures in more detail, I think, on the next slide. Um, so the biggest job that I do really during the meeting is, uh, um, or the most, most regular job that I do, I should say, is recognizing speakers. Uh, because they, no, no one can, can, can speak really at the meeting unless they're, they're recognized by the moderator. Uh, there's one exception to that, but, uh, maybe I'll cover that later. Um, and so people get into a queue, like a speaker, uh, a, a, a speaker queue, uh, which we now manage like with handsets, uh, which is also what you use for voting. And, uh, yeah, you punch a certain button on the handset, it adds you to a queue of speakers. And, uh, and I can see that speaker queue, uh, at all times. And sometimes we'll show that to the meeting so everyone else can see it too. Um, and I'll select speakers. Usually I'm selecting them pretty much in order, but I might have reasons which I'll express to the meeting if I take a speaker out of order for some reason. Like if the first five speakers on an article are the same five people that we've heard over and over and over for like several articles. Um, I'll sometimes skip ahead of them to get voices that we haven't heard, uh, recently at the meeting, just to kind of mix things up a bit. Um, or if we get a series of speakers who are all speaking on one side of the debate, um, I might ask if there's anyone who wants to speak on the other side of the debate and take someone out of order. So, um, so, yeah. Uh, speaking time, according to the town bylaws, uh, speaking time is generally limited to seven minutes during debate under an article. Um, seven minutes is a really long time to speak. Um, it turns out, uh, uh, sometimes there's technical subjects, like especially zoning, like you get into a lot of kind of technical issues. Um, um, that can, that can eat up a lot of that time, but like I've looked at statistics, uh, from past meetings and it's, uh, it's something along like the, the, the average speaking time is like something like between two and three minutes and it rarely goes more than four. Um, and if I feel, if someone's kind of droning on for a while, kind of like I'm doing right now, I was like, I might step in at the meeting and ask if they really have anything stub, like anything more to say that's like substantive and new. Uh, also, uh, I'll remind folks at the meeting, uh, like if they're just repeating the commentary of someone who already spoke before them on a particular subject, um, that's not really worth the meeting's time. Uh, and, uh, if you really agree with what someone said, then you can register your agreement by voting. When we get to voting, you don't need to get up there and actually just kind of repeat the same points. Um, let's see, directing questions. So if you're, if I were, i- i- if, if I recognize you as a speaker, um, and, uh, you're up from the speaker queue, you walk up to one of the podiums, uh, in the front of town hall and um, uh, you, you can ask quite, you don't have to just give an or, an oration or a speech, like you can, um, uh, you can actually, you could ask questions. That's actually a really excellent use of, uh, the time that, uh, town meeting members spend at the podium is asking questions to folks in the room who may be experts or just have useful context, uh, about the subject. Um, it could be legal questions posed to town council. Um, council, C O U N S E L, town lawyer. Um, uh, or it could be questions to subject matter experts who happen to be present at the meeting. Um, uh, like whether it's the chair of the redevelopment board or the, or the, uh, director of, uh, uh, the, the, like the planning department director or whoever it is. Um, um, uh, let's see, the scope of the warrant, I think Adam had, uh, touched on this earlier. The, the articles in the warrant, like that, it'll be like a brief little paragraph, usually just like a, like a sentence or two. Uh, which is the, the article text, like, like the warrant article text for a given article. And so I just give like a brief example here. So I'll just, uh, pick one that's not too long. So article forty-two, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend its zoning map to include and reflect an affordable housing, housing overlay district. If such a district is approved by the town at its twenty twenty-five annual town meeting or take any action related there too. So there's all this and it, we can't vote on that. Like that's what Adam was saying earlier. It's like, we, we, we don't vote on articles. We vote on the motions um, that, uh, are made or moved under these articles. And so the redevelopment board in this case, because this is a zoning article, um, the redevelopment board and their report has a recommendation about this. And, uh, their recommendation is what we end up voting on. Um, um, and town meeting members, as Adam also mentioned, uh, can amend or substitute the recommended vote that came from, in this case, the redevelopment board. In other cases, it might come from the select board or the finance committee. Um, uh, the, um, and that vote language that, that's in the reports of those boards and committees is what we end up voting on, not this. Cause this is not actually actionable. It's not specific enough to be actionable. It's just the subject, the bounds or this defines the scope of what we're allowed to cover in this. And so that's, um, that's kind of like the most like meant, like, like, uh, um, taxing job, I would say, that I do during the meeting is that I'm during debate, I'm listening the entire time uh, for whether what this person is saying, each, each speaker is saying falls within the bounds of scope of this warrant article text. Um, and that's my call to make as moderator. Um, and, uh, and so if I call something out of scope, then, then, then that's the end of it. And then that person has, the speaker has to figure out how to keep their comments within the boundaries of that scope. Uh, let's see. Uh, points of order. So I mentioned earlier, like in, in terms of recognizing speakers, like no one can speak at the meeting. Uh, like other than the moderator, no one can, no one can speak at the meeting until they're recognized by the moderator. So one kind of small exception, but important exception to that is like points of order or questions of privilege, questions of privilege, where town meeting members can actually shout out point of order. Um, uh, if they feel that I've, that as moderator, I've done something uh, that was not proper order. Now as moderator, I get to decide, um, like what's actually in order or not. But town meeting members, uh, in some cases, some, some of them, uh, are, it may be like kind of former moderators or they just have a lot of experience with this. Uh, um, um, or Adam might point something out because he recognized I was doing something that wasn't quite according to the rulebook. Um, and so you could raise a point of order. Uh, and so even though it's the, ultimately the moderator's decision, uh, what to do with that point of order, town meeting members have that opportunity to kind of raise that, uh, raise that point. Um, uh, similarly, there's questions of privilege, uh, which has to do with, um, uh, uh, I think, is it, uh, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong. I think like questions of privilege would cover a kind of environment, environmental concerns, like if it's, uh, if it's like, like, you, you can't hear the speakers because the sound system, like something's off or something. Something environmentally is not, uh, conducive to action, to having a, like a constructive deliberation at the meeting. Uh, where it's like, it's like too hot in the room or something. Um, uh, it usually has to do with the audio because the acoustics in town hall, it's a beautiful auditorium, but the acoustics are terrible. Um, and, uh, and so some folks will, will kind of call out. If you call that out as a point of order and say that you can't hear, it's like, I'm not going to split hairs over like, you know, dismissing your request because you didn't properly phrase it as a question of privilege. It's like, we don't need to get that, uh, that specific. If you, when in doubt, if you feel like something's wrong in the meeting, you can call it a point of order and, uh, you know, I'll recognize it pretty much interchangeably between these two, these two types of, uh, uh, these, uh, uh, interventions. Uh, and again, like the moderator's rulings are final. Um, if I happen to go in, if, if I make a determination that's in contradiction of like the rulebook, for instance, um, I, I try, try really hard to not do that. Um, but if, if that's the moderator's kind of final decision on it, then, then that's what the meeting does, right? Um, and so anyone as moderator should be doing their best, uh, to make sure that they're operating in compliance with the rules. Or else they kind of, the integrity of the whole system kind of breaks down if the moderator is kind of going rogue or is ignorant of what the rules are supposed to be. Um, okay. Uh, Pat, did you want to, actually let me cover just the consent agenda and then Pat, you want to take the, the rest of this? Uh, I think I already covered the first part about the order of the warrant articles are set by the select board, or at least some combination of me and Adam, I think, covered that. Um, and I mentioned that like sometimes we'll take articles out of order for scheduling reasons for folks to be present, uh, who are relevant to that discussion. Um, and then the consent agenda. So let's look at this. So this is the actual document that, uh, we'll be presenting when we do the consent. So the consent agenda is, uh, it's a relatively new introduction to our town meeting in Arlington. It started uh, maybe a couple of years before I was, so maybe like five or six years ago, something like that. Um, and lots of town meetings across Massachusetts, uh, have been adopting something similar. Uh, actually the fourth edition of Town Meeting Time, which we technically don't use yet, uh, does cover, has a section on consent agendas. Um, but, uh, uh, the idea is, and Annie talked, spoke to this too, that there's a lot of finance articles, for instance, that are, um, they're just like, they come up every year. They're generally not controversial. Um, we need to vote on them anyway, because we need to cover all the agenda items, which is all the warrant articles. Um, the meeting's not really done with until we've voted on all the articles. Um, so the, for the ones that are very, that are, that repeat every year and are not particularly controversial, um, or what they're doing is very trivial. Sometimes it's just like administrative corrections, or there was a change in reference to uh, Massachusetts general laws that like a reference that changed and we're updating the town bylaws to, to match that, like pretty like administrative, uh, stuff like that, um, uh, that aren't really, uh, uh, generally worthy of much debate. Um, uh, well, I'll put those ahead of time based on the recommendations, uh, that I get from the finance committee chair for the finance articles, the redevelopment board chair for the zoning articles. Um, uh, and, and from the select board for all the other articles, which is kind of the default. Um, and so I'll construct a consent agenda and that's already been shared in advance. Um, uh, there was a format, it wasn't in this format, uh, but, uh, there was, uh, one of the pages uh, in the town meeting packet that you should all hopefully have, uh, has a page about the, uh, consent agenda. And it looks different than this because, uh, for reasons, but, um, so this is what I'll actually present at the meeting on Monday. Um, and, um, it's broken into two parts. You'll see there's a majority vote consent agenda and a two-thirds vote consent agenda. Uh, I'll, I'll leave it to Pat to, to explain the difference between why some articles have majority vote versus a two-thirds vote. Um, but suffice to say, uh, we take two votes for the consent agenda. Uh, one that covers the majority, the, the majority vote articles. Um, uh, and one that covers the two-thirds vote articles. Technically, it's not the articles that have majority, two-thirds vote, it's the motions under them and sometimes are a little sloppy with the language, but, um, um, and so if anyone wishes to debate, uh, or just they want to speak to, for whatever reason, any of these articles, they, uh, town meeting members can hold articles from the consent agenda. So if, so similar to how I mentioned with the budgets earlier, where um, you know, we go through, like I'll, I'll kind of recite the names of the budgets and town meeting members can just shout out hold, uh, when, uh, I get to a, a, a budget that they want to speak to. I'll do the same thing with the articles in the consent agenda. Uh, actually, and this will actually do on the first night, the consent agenda. And so I'll call out article thirty-four. Uh, maybe I hear silence and I move on. And so that means that it'll stay on the consent agenda. Uh, article thirty-five, silence. It stays on the consent agenda. And let's say, just hypothetically, uh, uh, we get to article thirty-seven and, um, and someone wishes to do something with it, like they want to speak to, um, uh, and so they, they shout out hold and I might say, okay, who's holding article thirty-seven? Um, and, you know, they'll, they'll call out their name and, and then I would uh, delete that row from the table and it's no longer in the consent agenda. I'm going to undo that right now before I forget. Um, and so I'll go through, there'll be, uh, some number of removals or holds from the consent agenda. And then when we're done, like this list will get ruined a little bit by those holds and and then we'll take one majority vote, which means fifty percent plus one required to pass it. Uh, we'll take a majority vote on this portion of the consent agenda. And whatever that vote is, basically gets transferred to each of the motions under those, each of the main motions under those articles. So because these tend to be, uh, uh, these are the non-controversial articles, it usually passes either unanimously or you get some troublemaker who votes no on the consent agenda or something. And so you might have a vote of like, you know, two hundred and thirty to two. And whatever that vote tally is, will get transferred to all of these articles on the consent agenda. Um, similarly, we'll, I, I, I'll run through all of these articles in the two-thirds section and then we'll have a vote on whatever the remaining ones that haven't been held. And whatever that vote is, will get transferred to each of those individual, uh, uh, main motions under those articles. Um, trying to remember now whether we generally do a voice vote on that or not. I'll probably have to go to the video to, to see what we've done in the past, but, um, again, like if there's anything controversial about them, tho- those articles would be held, uh, because there's something to say about them. Um, so once we voted on the, the, the two sections of the consent agenda, the majority of two-thirds, uh, uh, sections of the consent agenda, then those articles uh, are all disposed of. Um, and, uh, and then you'll see them kind of, you know, a bunch of articles light up green on here and they'll be scattered throughout because they're not sequential. They're just kind of, you know, all over, uh, uh, the warrant. Um, okay. Uh, Pat, did you want to take away, like, like, uh?
Okay, I'm all set. So we're at debate, who gets to talk and for how long? Uh, the who is pretty easy. Uh, we all get to talk because that's why we got elected to town meeting. Um, also town officials and chairs of board and commissions get to talk and they do talk quite a bit, actually. Um, and there's a lot of back and, uh, back and forth. Um, residents of the town who are not town meeting members uh, also have a right to talk upon introduction by a town meeting member. And strangers, that is to say, everybody else, um, can speak with, with the approval of, of the meeting. Uh, so that sort of is the list of the people that you'll be hearing from. Greg has already gone over how long you have and has strongly encouraged you, uh, not to play out all the rope. Um, I can add only that, uh, a, a couple of things. One is that you can speak a second time. It doesn't happen very often. Um, but you can, and the time limit for that is five minutes. You can't speak three times, uh, unless the meeting as a whole, uh, is willing to, to authorize that. You also will have various, uh, reports and announcements that, that happen. The time limit there is, uh, four minutes. One issue that often comes up with newer members, because you've seen all this happen on, on, uh, C-span, uh, is that is yielding your time to other people, right? So I yield most of this time to Mr. So-and-so and that time to Mrs. So-and-so, but that doesn't happen. You can't yield your time. Uh, the time you have is not just the time you're speaking, it's the time that you have the floor. Uh, and that means that if you pursue a strategy, Uh, and that means that if you pursue a strategy of, uh, of asking questions, uh, which can be cross-examination or legitimate inquiry or whatever, they're answering the questions on your time. And that counts, uh, against, uh, how much time do we have? And, uh, sometimes the long-winded answers can create a problem for you in that regard that you need to be aware of, need to be aware of. So let's go into the scope of debate. Um, there's not a whole lot to say other than what, uh, what Greg has already said. You can't speak except to, to, uh, raise a motion, uh, raise a point of privilege, um, without recognition of the monitor and you have to be limited to the matter at hand. Uh, that's easier for some people than others. Um, it, it's always hard for me. I meander all over the place, but I haven't done that so far, except for just now. Um, and there's a lot of civility rules that basically just say you treat people strictly. You don't impugn the motives of other people. You don't accuse them of being in the pocket of billionaires or other people. Uh, you can't indulge in personalities. You've got to keep the discussion where you expect a legitimate discussion to, to take place. Um, eventually, uh, of course, uh, debate has to come to an end. Uh, and there's several ways that that can happen. Uh, one is, and it happens less often than you would think, but sometimes a debate just, just, uh, ends with a natural death. Uh, you, people have said what they have had to say. Uh, there are no more people who are eager to address the audience and it's time to just move on to a vote. Uh, you don't need a motion to terminate the vote in that situation. Uh, Greg can declare, if no one else wants to speak, he can declare it terminated and move on to the next state. Um, on the other hand, uh, the debate can be executed by a member moving to terminate debate before that time. That motion requires a second and requires a two thirds vote. And you can't interrupt a speaker, uh, to make that. So a motion to terminate has to wait your turn, uh, your turn. Um, when you move to terminate debate, you can't say anything about the matter before the meeting. The only thing you can do is say, I moved to terminate debate on this matter. And if you want to terminate debate on everything and not just the matter technically before the body, you would say this matter and all previous matters or some words to the same effect, which would terminate debate on, on everything. So I'm going to move on now to voting. Uh, when is it a majority and when is it a two thirds vote? And generally speaking, the world, the word is, the world is divided into zoning and not zoning. Uh, the general default rule in zoning is that it takes two thirds. But there's a, and we'll get to a second, there's exceptions to that. The default rule for, for bylaws and for other matters is a simple majority, which means a majority of the, of the members present, of the members present when there's a, a, yeah, quorum present. Um, so that's what it generally is. With respect to zoning, there's, there are some really important statutory, uh, restrictions on that, that may get a majority for generally things having to do with housing, uh, or with other kinds of, uh, of, I will call them loosely unconventional zoning kinds of rules. Uh, and a little bit earlier, I put into a, a link to a more detailed discussion of that. This is important to you actually, because most of the other reasons why it is that something could be two thirds or one third, or one or a simple majority, or matters somebody else will decide and you won't care much about. Um, but in the zoning area where you're dealing with amendments and so forth, it can be really important how you frame that, because that can affect whether or not the matter before, uh, either on amendments or the whole, the whole business, um, are a majority rule instead. And sometimes strategy enters into that, but you always need to sort of read the rules and make sure you understand what the implications are of whatever it is, uh, that you're proposing. On the other side, the non-zoning side, uh, there are a lot of things that are two thirds. Uh, mostly there are things that have to do with bonds and, uh, and indebtedness or acquisition of land. Uh, but beyond that, there's, uh, a bunch of statutes which are all over the place. And in general, the people who are responsible for dealing with those areas will have identified those things. And, and you'll, uh, and, and you will see that. So you don't need to really worry yourself about what it is. You should just recognize it. So you'll see in tabling, uh, frequently when things, P things are taken out of order and there's already something on the table, uh, that's before the floor, you will table that, uh, that sort of postpones it and you bring it back. And then you take, uh, and then you take, uh, the matter that you want to have. Maybe it's the school budget because the school superintendent is there that, that night and can't be there another night. Um, and this is sort of technical stuff that's, that's happening in front of you that in general you won't be very much, um, much involved with. And I'm going to sort of, the only other thing I think that it's important to say here is on reconsideration. You will see at the end of every meeting, um, there'll be a notice of a potential reconciliation, of, uh, reconsideration that, uh, will never actually take place, but you have to, to do that in order to preserve the right to move to reconsider later on. And you can't move to reconsider an item unless you were on the prevailing side. So you can't just sort of say, I was against it. I'm still against it. I want you to have another vote. Uh, you have to be changing your own vote in order to make, uh, that happen. So the final subject I wanted to talk about is what happens after town meeting is over. We are towns, uh, well, at the bylaws that are enacted by the town, uh, whether they're zoning bylaws or ordinary bylaws, uh, have to be approved by the attorney general. And the attorney general will decide whether they're consistent, uh, with, uh, consistent with state law. Uh, if the, if he does say that it is consistent, in this case she says it's consistent, uh, then it will become effective. Uh, for non-zoning articles, uh, they, it becomes effective when the town clerk, uh, follows the statutory requirements for posting these things so that they're officially adopted. Uh, that should happen relatively quickly after the attorney general has spoken, but there's no particular time limit for it. Uh, and I, right here, I, I doubt that there would be any questions raised about that. Um, when, in zoning articles, it's a little different because if a zoning article is, uh, is approved, it becomes effective, um, as of the time of the, according to the statute, according to the, it becomes effective at the time of the, uh, initial vote way back when. Uh, and it's all retroactive. Uh, it's also, uh, if, uh, if the attorney general invalidates them, uh, then it has to be sort of, uh, it has to be retroactively invalidated as well. So there's a sense of uncertainty, but essentially you, uh, there's, uh, retroactivity built into, um, into zoning articles. Now there's, these are only have to do with, with bylaw changes. There are other things, uh, and one of them I wanted to mention, because we will hear a, a whole bunch of them, uh, on this particular warrant, and that's home rule petitions. The simple thing about home rule petitions is that with the exception of Boston, the constitution of the state prevents the legislature from acting, from enacting laws that relate only to one town or, or other municipality. So unless the municipality asks them to do it. And so the, the home rule petition is the way you go about asking the legislature to adopt, to adopt, uh, legislation that will then authorize you to adopt legislation that will achieve, uh, one thing or another. So this doesn't become effective immediately. What town meeting does is it authorized the, the select board to request the, uh, legislature to act. It'll go to typically the member of the House of Representatives is where this, uh, is where this actually begins most of the time. Um, so either Dave Rogers or Sean Garbley for now would, would, uh, would file the, the act. There's a certain amount of negotiation that goes on to with exactly what that will say. And then it goes into the state process. There are generally two kinds of HRPs. One is a kind that generally is just looking at, you know, building something at a given intersection, say, or, uh, a project take place in Arlington, which doesn't logically affect any, for anywhere else. But sometimes, um, HRPs are designed along with other departments to, uh, provide pressure to have a broader kind of state legislation. Um, and they have a somewhat different process. They're somewhat disfavored, so it's difficult to, to get them through. But they can be effective. And in the case of our fossil fuel bylaw, we're effective in getting us to be able to adopt a policy and with other, with other towns as well, uh, adopt a policy that otherwise would have been contrary, uh, to state law. So that brings us with an end, uh, with, and, uh, uh, if we have time for questions, I'm happy to, uh, I'm happy to address anything that you may have on what I've just said.
Thanks, Pat. And, uh, I just wanted to call, uh, Pat, I don't remember if you, if you, uh, spoke to this or not, but, uh, if you did, I think it's worth reiterating anyway, that, uh, there, there's no changing of votes after the voting closes. Uh, and so, um, we do a test vote at the beginning of each night, um, to make sure that the handsets are working properly for, for voting. And it's really important that, uh, that you're there, that you're present for that, uh, to, to verify that, uh, everything is functioning properly. Because you don't want to get to, uh, an important vote, um, and you haven't tested your handset. And for whatever reason, um, uh, it's not registering your vote. And once, and so voting might be open for only say like, like, like a minute. Um, and once I call voting closed, like that's it, uh, it's cut off. And there's no correcting the record after the fact, uh, once voting's closed. That is the final tally that's recorded in the electronic system. Uh, so really make sure that, uh, that, that you're testing your clicker when we do have that test vote each night. Uh, or that you don't misplace it and miss a vote, because we can't just add, you can't tell us after, we all, we sometimes get requests. Someone says, oh, I misplaced my handset when we took that vote. Can you just add me to the final tally? And we cannot, we, it's a, it's a system, electronic, uh, voting system that is basically, I mean, it has records that are, that are finalized, uh, in real time. So, um, don't, don't get caught off guard by that. So any, uh, yes, Pat said, let's, let's open up to, uh, any questions that folks have about it. I know there were a number of questions in the chat. Uh, looks like, uh, those have been answered, I think. But, uh, a- any comments, questions, points of discussion folks want to raise? Uh, did we really cover everything?
Really not.
Greg, while you look, one thing I, I wanted to mention because of this year is that when you have a home rule amendment, it's only good for the, to the legislative section, session that you're addressing. So eventually when that session is over, you've got to go through and do it again. And we have several articles on the warrant this time that involve that problem.
Right. I mean, uh, I was showing them on the, the progress tracker and all folks were following that, but, uh, this text is a little bigger. Um, so, yeah. So, yeah, articles thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen are all home rule petitions.
Yeah. So I had a question about the home rule petition. So does that mean that Eric Heluth has to recuse himself from all of those?
So we do have, uh, uh, at least in recent years, we've had a couple of town meeting members, um, including Mr. Heluth, who, uh, because of nature of their day job, uh, recused themselves from, I think that's, uh, I'm, I'm guessing that that may be why he recused himself from, uh, from these votes. Like we clicked through, uh, to this article in the annotated warrant. Um, yeah. And so this is probably, I, I haven't checked all of them, but this, this is probably the case with all of these, uh, home rule petitions on the warrant that Mr. Heluth has probably accused himself. There's another town meeting member who also does like similar sort of work, uh, at the state level and recuses himself from these. Um, but yeah. Um, yeah. Uh, let's see, Paul Salker?
Hey, thank you. Um, first, just thanks also for, for, for this presentation and Annie for answering all these questions in the chat. Um, the, um, I'm just curious, I'm, I'm trying to understand the idea of the substitute motion a little bit better. So, you know, we've got this consent agenda here. It's got all these no action recommendations in them. So presumably if someone is going to object to a no action recommendation, the consent agenda, they have to be prepared to raise a substitute motion. And if I understand you correctly, that substitute motion has to be like noticed out, or sometimes it's not the right term, but it has to be distributed in advance in order to meet with your notice requirements. So I guess, or it's the one that was originally, or, or is it the one that's originally in the document that's from the ARB or whoever, even if it wasn't recommended?
Right, though.
Or how does that work?
Yeah, it's like an article thirty eight here. I'll pull that up. Um, right. You'll notice one of these is highlighted, uh, in yellow. Um, so the, the articles that are listed here, which is, but I, 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 I sometimes refer to as the preliminary consent agenda, which means this, this isn't the list of articles that we're necessarily going to vote on for the consent agenda. It's the initial state of it before town meeting members, like, hold various articles from it. And that's what we're, that's what the meeting will eventually vote on. Um, so in this initial state that it's in now, um, uh, like for instance, this one's highlighted because, uh, I got an email from, uh, from the petitioner in this case, uh, who's a town meeting member who would be interested in, let's see, is it the petitioner? Uh, yes, Mr. Greenspan, um, who was, who, uh, wanted to let me know that, uh, he was interested in filing a, uh, a substitute motion for that. And, and so I, rather than remove it from here and confuse everybody about like, why isn't article thirty eight appearing here when I kind of published, uh, in the packet, like, but so it's just really for clarity that I might highlight them in here if there's a clear intention that someone's going to remove it. But just so that everyone's on the same page with the same starting point and there's no confusion. Um, there's going to be confusion anyway, because the consensus is just always confusing my nature, but, um, trying to minimize that confusion. So when we get to this, I have a note in, in, you know, the spreadsheet that I use to kind of manage the meeting, that Mr. Greenspan is going to hold this and he has a substitute motion ready. Um, or he will have a substitute motion. So someone could, I mean, uh, uh, you know, I've worked with Mr. Greenspan, uh, uh, with other amendments and substitutes he's had in the past. I have full faith that he will produce a substitute motion at some point. Um, someone could decide that like they want to hold it. Like, so for a no action, this is a very important point about no action articles. And I'll, I'll clarify, I'll make this clear at the meeting as well. Um, that if you want, as a town meeting member, if you want to hold uh, an article from the consent agenda that has a recommended vote of no action, you need to be prepared or know of someone who's prepared to offer a substitute motion. Because, um, there's kind of two levels of scope during debate. There's the scope that we talked about earlier of the scope of the warrant article text. So if we look at, uh, uh, article thirty eight, uh, where did I have that? Somewhere in here. Uh, yeah, article thirty eight. This is the warrant article text, right? And so there's always like, there's these weasel words at the end that you'll see at basically the end of pretty much every, uh, warrant article, which is, or take any action related there too. Well, related is a pretty subjective term, right? Like everything's related to everything else ultimately, right? Um, uh, so I have to make a judgment call as to like, like, is this really related to this, this subject or not? Um, and so there's this, like, so yeah, that's the scope of what someone is saying or a motion that they're trying to present relative to the warrant article text. Now, in this case, the main motion that's going to come before the meeting, like, like, let's say, so, um, so someone's going to hold this from the consent agenda. And, uh, so when we eventually get to article thirty eight, like maybe on like night three or night four, whenever it's going to be, um, we have article thirty eight before us and the recommended vote, uh, of the redevelopment board is no action. So if, uh, so I'll invite the person up who holds it from the consent agenda. Um, because they're kind of like by default, the first person in the speaker queue implicitly for this article, because they held it, right? Um, and, um, because the main motion in front of the meeting is the recommended vote from the redevelopment board, which is no action. Um, the only debate that can be held at that point is within the scope of no action. And so no action is kind of like, uh, it's a box that has zero area to it, right? Like there's nothing to do, so there's nothing to debate about it. So the only thing that you can do, that a town meeting member can do is to make a motion at that point, to open up debate, to discuss that motion. Um, and typically in a case like this, it'll be a substitute motion. There's other things you could do, like there's more exotic motions that just don't really come up in practice at, at our particular, uh, town meetings in Arlington. Like it, something can be referred to a committee, for instance. In this case, it's like, well, it can't. In this case, it's like, well, it came from a committee. So who would you refer to? Like the redevelopment board, but they're the ones who decided to take no action. So you end up in kind of like a, an infinite loop there. So, so yeah, so substitute motion is typically, so, I mean, it's not technically 100% accurate, but to a first approximation, which covers about ninety nine point nine 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 percent of scenarios that we encounter in practice. The only thing a town meeting member can realistically, feasibly do is offer a substitute motion. So that's probably what's going to happen here, that Mr. Greenspan will ask at the meeting to hold this article and I will delete that row from the table and it'll be gone. And then, and I'll, I'll ask, Mr. Greenspan, do you have a substitute motion that you intend to provide? He doesn't need it right then and there because it's going to be a few nights before we get to article thirty eight. And so if someone tried to play games, and I, I have no expectation that Mr. Greenspan would do this, but if someone would try to, try to play games, and as Mr. Diggins said in the chat, like, we don't really have troublemakers at town meeting, if you believe that. And so someone could just hold a bunch of articles and then like, including no action articles, and then not offer a substitute motion, right? And, you know, I'll probably use the social pressure at the meeting to try to embarrass them. So that, you know, so it's not incentivized to waste the meeting's time like that. But in practice, that doesn't really happen. So, does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. I mean, the only, this is not that important, is does it ever happen that you get multiple substitute motions for a given warrant article? So people might come in not just with amendments to an existing motion, but also to with wholly independent substitute motions for a given warrant article?
Yes.
Yeah. And
That's the record.
Oh, boy. I'm, I was just about to pull it up. So this, I'm trying to think, was this last year or?
Was it a housing article or was it, it was a housing article of some kind?
Of course. Yeah. So it's always the zoning articles that have, the ones that, they don't always have a lot of amendments, but the ones that do have a lot of amendments are always zone articles.
Thinking like article twenty four from like twenty twenty three or something?
It's not the only one, but, but I recall that the ADU article that we passed.
Oh, yeah, that was.
That had a lot.
Yeah. That was epic.
Yes.
So it all went down.
It's very, very important to have a Google engineer as your moderator.
Yeah, I am.
Only a Google engineer can do the appropriate workflow for all those amendments. Well, maybe another kind of, you don't know what I'm saying.
Oh, was it two, was it twenty twenty three?
Twenty two or twenty three. Even MBTAC was not that bad. It was a lot.
That, that mostly answered my question. I, I don't mean to send us down a rabbit hole, but thank, but thank you very much.
You're just, you're just getting all of us. You're just allowing all of us. That's our trauma.
Here it is. So this was twenty twenty three. Article twelve, these were all the, all the subsidiary motions under a, I believe it was a no action article.
Yeah.
Like the, 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 the main motion was the recommended vote from, it must've been the redevelopment board, right?
Yeah.
Of no action. And then we had, yes, the main motion initially was no action. This is the most complex one I've seen in recent years. And then we had two substitute motions. The Malofchik substitute motion and the Benson stamp substitute motion. And then we had amendments stacked up on the substitute motion, one of the substitute motions. So there's a particular sequencing we have to do here. I mean, there's, there's not, there's not necessarily just one unique solution to this. This is where it's helpful to be, I guess, an engineer of sorts. But we basically have to consider this substitute motion with all of the amendments applied to it. There's also an issue that some of these amendments actually amended overlapping texts. And that was, that was an interesting kind of technical wrinkle to deal with. So the order of them mattered. And then, and I had to work with the proponents of these motions to make sure that they weren't making mutually exclusive, inconsistent or contradictory motions, which takes a little bit of finagling to, to word things just right. And so we ended up with a Malofchik substitute motion with all the amendments applied to it or not. So we had to vote on all those amendments first. That, actually, that's the, this is the sequence, like, like one is the first amendment, is the first motion that we voted on under that article. And then so on. Then we applied all the others in order. I forget which ones passed or failed, but actually, one second. It's, it's, this might be actually instructive to see what the filled out.
Or was?
Like, like the, like the, the progress tracker. This, so this is from twenty twenty three. And then this is article twelve. So this is what it looks like when it gets filled out, right? Like the green rows are the ones where it was an affirmative vote by the meeting.
It was turf.
The, oh, the turf. That's right. Oh, so that was actually, that wasn't.
I don't think that was the record. I think it was ADUs, but.
Yeah, I think you're probably right. This one I think was the most, maybe the most complex in terms of the interactions between some of the subsidiary motions. But you can see here the record, like, like, like the recording of some of these amendments passed, the ones in green, some of them failed. And then so this Malofchik substitute motion, oh, good, I got the indentation right on this. That substitute motion with all these amendments applied to it, or at least the green ones applied to it, that ended up failing. And then there was another substitute motion that didn't have any amendments on it and it passed. And then the overall motion failed. Is that, is that right? Oh, no, I'm sorry. It got even crazier than that. It was, it got split. So it was split between two parts because there were two independent pieces of the vote language, which got split into different votes, which is very rare that that happens. Yes, so.
Right.
Maybe I answered your question, but I think I'd probably.
Oh, no, you, you definitely answered my question. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
A dozen more questions about this, but.
One night of town meeting in order to form a study committee.
Right.
Welcome to the show.
One half of the vote language was forming a study committee. And then the other half was having a moratorium about installing turf fields on town property, I think. Okay. Any other, any questions or thoughts?
I will give you all my piece of best advice for being a town meeting member other than to read all the reports and be prepared. And that is that if you are at any point while you're sitting on the floor confused about anything, talk to your seatmates, particularly the ones who've been there for a while. They will answer your questions. They will help you out. They will help you figure out what you're voting on or whether or not you ought to stand up and speak or, you know, whatever you wanted to do. Don't be afraid to stand up and speak, but I personally believe that the best thing you can do is ask questions that gets more information out for your other fellow town meeting members. Additional information that may support a position that you think is important or clarify something people are confused about is way more important than your personal opinion about whether we should vote yes or no on the article. At least that's how I feel about it, which doesn't mean I won't occasionally make a speech. And think really hard about the things that you want to speak to because you want to make space for your fellow town meeting members to also get to debate. And if we have thirty people lined up to talk on an article, believe me, not all thirty are going to get to speak. So I personally have a rule that says that I don't talk, stand up to talk more than three times a town meeting and I've been pretty good about sticking to it. And those who know me well will know that this is very difficult for me. So my two cents.
Yeah, like it's, some of these rules and procedures are specific to Arlington and, but like most of them are actually pretty common across town meetings. I talked to some moderators in other towns and they're kind of appalled by the idea that there's a motion, that we recognize a motion to terminate debate because like everyone should get to speak if they have something to say. I imagine if we did that in Arlington, town meeting would probably last like throughout the year. But because we, we just get a lot of engagement at our town meeting compared to a lot of other towns, which I think is a good thing. There's a lot of people who care about these issues. There was, there was a question in the chat around like, like, how much preparation? Like, like, how, how prepared should town meeting members be, something to that effect? As far as like reading, like what's the expectation of reading the reports and, and things like that, like in detail? And how to form an opinion on it. It's kind of, it's kind of like, like a student in school asking like, like how good should their grades be? Right? It's a, well, it kind of depends like, like what their, what their own work ethic is and what their own standards are for their own performance and what their parents think about it. And in this case, what your voters think about your performance as a town meeting member. And some precincts might be more lax about that or, or, or have a higher expectation than other precincts, right? It varies across the town. And, and so it's really like, what do you want to do with this role? And what do you want to kind of offer the, the residents in your precinct as far as your representation of them? So it's really a kind of a personal choice for folks, right? Some people like, like put like tremendous amounts of time into not just reading the reports, but like kind of researching like the, the subject matter. And then I, I imagine that there's some folks who walk in fairly cold in terms of like preparation and just kind of listen to how the debate goes and see what they're persuaded by one way or another, right? And, and if you, if you get that wrong, well, your voters will let you know, right? When, when it's time for, for elections. Any other thoughts or questions? Well, seeing none. Well, this is good timing because I promised my daughter that we were going to watch a Star Wars movie at nine thirty and it seems like we're just going to make it. So if there's nothing else, like thanks for, everyone for joining us, all the new town meeting members. Looking forward to seeing everyone in, in person on Monday. And, and thanks to all the presenters tonight who put time into kind of, you know, preparing the content on all these slides. This is really helpful. Saves me from talking for an hour and a half. So yeah, thanks again. And I'm going to post this on the civic engagement group, which is part of Envision Arlington, has a YouTube channel. And so in the next day or so, I'm going to try to get the recording of this posted there. And so, yeah, thanks for participating tonight and looking forward to Monday. Night, everybody.